Nice weather. Nice weather. Yeah. Bismillah, are we live? Alhamdulillah. Assalamualaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamu alaikum wa sallatu wa salam wa ala sayyidina wa habibina rasulillah. Wa ala alihi wa manwaala. Allahumma iftaha alayna fathul 'arifin wa thaqna tothiqas 'alihin. Allahumma iftaha alayna hikmatak wa insha'ala alayna rahmatak. Ya zaljala diwarakram. Wassalamu alaikum wa sallatu wa salam. Alhamdulillah. So continuing on with the 12 subjects that Ibn Juzayl Kalbi said was necessary for somebody who was going to be teaching or doing tafsir, which would mean essentially telling you what the Quran means. And the idea that you would be speaking on behalf of God should, I think, cause anybody pause. So people that hastily want to tell you what the Quran means or it's a bad sign for those people because the early community didn't really speak about the Quran. They were so terrified of saying something that might be incorrect or even Sayyidina Umar radi'Allah anhu did not like to speak about what the Quran meant. So the number of Sahabah that actually did interpret the Quran is actually quite small. And the Prophet SAW, interestingly enough, did not really speak often about specific ayaahs. So if you look in the books of Hadith, there's usually a section called Bab al-Tafsir or Bab al-Quran. And you'll see that the Prophet SAW actually did not speak much on the Quran. And the reason for that is had he spoken, nobody could say anything after that. And so because the Quran is going to be relevant for every time and place, it was very important that people be able to find new meanings in the Quran using the methodology. So you have to have a methodology and that methodology is embodied in these subjects. If you use that methodology, the Quran can produce constantly new meanings. And that's why people come up with new meanings all the time. I mean, there's people still today that are writing interesting things about the Quran. But it's very important to have these subjects. So we went through Usul al-Din, which is the idea of Aqeedah, understanding the foundational beliefs of Muslims. Usul al-Fiqh, which is another really important subject, which is essentially what in Western tradition, it's similar to constitutional law. It's the law that teaches you how to derive laws out of the principles, the legal principles that you're bound to. And then Lo'ah, which is very important, we went into that yesterday. Lo'ah is basically what we call in the West, diction or word choice. Why did the Quran use one word as opposed to another word? And then Nahw, which encompasses... Traditionally grammar, when you spoke about grammar, it wasn't just grammar as we understand it today, but it included also things like prosody, it included literature. It included, in fact, there's basically another set of sciences related to grammar itself. And then Al-Bayyan, which is rhetoric. And Bayan, traditionally it was called Bayan and then it became later known as Balaghah. And Balaghah is what we call in the West rhetoric. And that initially was two sciences and then it became three. So you had Bayan Ma'ani and Al-Bali'a was the third one that was added. And then some of the scholars took Isti'ara as a separate subject, which is the science of metaphor because it's so important. And then you have Tafsir. Now, when we get to Tafsir, it's, there's a saying, "Qif haythu wa qafuthu ma amdi." You know, stop where they stopped and then proceed. So you have to know what people in the past said. And so there are very foundational or important tafsirs that if you don't know them, you're going to get into trouble with the Quran. You have to know, for instance, obviously, the most important one is At-tabari. And everybody is ala at At-tabari. Everybody is dependent upon Imam At-tabari. He was an Imam, he was a mushtihad. He had his own Medhab. But he was probably the most learned of that period in the time of the great formation of the Medhabs in the second and third century. You have that period. He collected all of these different opinions, especially from the early exegites. So you had the Sahabah, but then you had a very interesting second generation. So for instance, you had the students of Ibn Mas'ud. Ibn Mas'ud, Abdullah Ibn Mas'ud, was a very important early Sahabi from the outskirts of Mecca. Ibn Mas'ud went to Iraq, Al-Iraq. And he has basically a school really. And from that came, from his students come people like Abu Hanifa radi'Allah anhu. So Ibn Mas'ud taught these great students. And then they had these students, like Abi Hanifa, who was a student of a student. But one of them was Muhammad bin Ka'ab al-Quradi, who was a very interesting character. He was from Beni Qureeda, so he was one of the Jewish survivors when the Jews were expelled from Medina. And during the Beni Qureeda, when there were, some of them were executed for treason. He was one of the people that grew up in the ethos of the Muslims. And he became probably one of the most learned people of the Quran in that period. In fact, the Prophet SAW, Ibn al-Khaythamah relates a Hadith that the Prophet SAW predicted that there would be a man that would come from the Kahinnain, the two Kohans, who would be "A'lamun Nas b'kitabillah." He would be the most learned in the Book of Allah. So it's very interesting that a Jewish convert to Islam becomes one of the main sources of early tafsir. Another really important and main source, which is also fascinating, is some people in... You had A'ta Ibn Abi Rabah, a Nubi, who was a student of Ibn Abbas. He was an African. And they describe him as "Halek alon," like he was really dark and "Afthas." So he was African, his features were African. And he became the most learned exegid in Mecca. Everybody considered him, as long as he was in Mecca, that there was, nobody could give fatwa if he was in Mecca. He made Hajj 70 times. So he lived to be a very ripe age. And the Salaf said that there was nobody more learned about Hajj than this man. So these are some of the people that you find in that early period, that they're very interesting. Mujahid was very important. Ibn al-Jabr, he was a student again of Ibn Abbas. And Mujahid had an immense amount of knowledge. So Ikrima, who was a Moulah. And he was accused, but generally he's considered a Thaqani. He was accused of having Kharija leanings. But he was, he grew up in the house of Ibn Abbas. And so Ibn Abbas apparently used to shackle him when he was young just so he would not go out, so he would study. So he trained him early on. And he also became very important. So Mujahid, Ikrima, A'ta Ibn Abi Rabah. These are really important people in that early period. And then there were other ones like Masruq Ibn al-Ajjda, who was very important. So you'll see these people, when you get into tafsir, you will see these people mentioned. They're usually the first people mentioned. So At-tabari will say, "Qadim Mujahidun." And it's very important when he says that. Or Ibn Abbas himself, because Ibn Abbas was an inheritor, a prophetic inheritor. The Prophet SAW made a Dua for him. So then after Tabari, you begin to get commentaries. But what you'll find, and it's very fascinating about Quranic commentaries, what you will find is that they tend to quote the previous ones. There's a real hesitancy in a lot of the Mufassireen to come up with anything from themselves. They really rely on Naqal. And that has to do with the fact that they were just very terrified about speaking about the Book of Allah. I mean, we can learn from that. And the same is true for Hadith. So you'll find in the Hadith traditions, they all quote the previous sources. They tend not to want to come with something from themselves. Then you get somebody like Fakhur Dina Razi, who introduces a completely different way of looking at the Quran. It's the first serious philosophical tafsir of the Quran. And a lot of people actually condemned it because it was so different from what anybody had seen prior to it. And then you also got some of the Sufi tafsirs, which there also had mixed reviews. Ibn Juzayl mentions a Sulami's tafsir, which was called Al-Haqaa'iq, which means the realities. And Ibn Juzayl says, some people call it Al-Bawatal, you know, the vanities, you know, like meaningless. And he said, "But if we were fair, we would say it has in it realities, but it also has things that are unacceptable." So tafsir is very important to know. Traditionally, in the Sunni madrasas, the two most important were Imam al-Baidawi's tafsir and Imam al-Baghawi. They were studied. And Imam al-Baidawi took a great rhetorical tafsir, Ad Keshaf, which was written by the sixth-century scholar Az-Zamakhshari. And he, because Zamakhshari was a Mu'tazilite. And so because of that, Imam al-Baidawi wanted to really write something that did not have any Atizal in it, any of the rationalism. So that's what he did. So tafsir is extremely important. Then you get into the Qira'at. And I want to look at the Qira'at tomorrow. But there were basically... The Qira'at are very important and they're very interesting. And they're actually a miracle of the Prophet SAW. Because we're the only community that has an agreed-upon book. So all the previous communities have differences about their books. And what I mean, not differences of opinion about what the book says, I'm actually talking about the text itself. So for instance, Christians have different, the Catholics have a different Bible than the Protestants have, as an example, because they reject some of the books. Muslims are the only people that actually have a completely agreed-upon text. And I'm talking not just about the actual physical book, but also the way it's written. So there's no difference about the way it's written, also the way it's recited. Nobody else has this outside of Islam. I mentioned earlier the Greek New Testament, which, I mean, we don't even know if Christ spoke Greek. The few lines in his original languages that are in the Greek are in Aramaic. So he definitely spoke Aramaic. But even in the Qoina Greek of first-century Palestine, they differ on how things are pronounced and things like that. We don't have any difference. There's 17 points of articulation. All of the Haruf are known, the letters, the Sifat, the Haq, the Mustahaq, the right of the letter, anything that comes on it. So that's really important. So the Qira'at involve the different ways the Quran can be recited. But the Rasam al-Uthmani is the same. And one of the miracles of the Uthmatic script, which was what Sayyidina Uthman created a committee and then that committee wrote out the Quran. And every time they accepted something, it had to have two witnesses that saw it written in the presence of the Prophet SAW. So it wasn't just that they're saying, "Oh, this is..." So it had to have two witnesses. And so it was a very rigorous methodology that they used. In fact, one has to marvel at that methodology when we talk about academic rigor today. When we look, how did, in seventh-century Arabia, how did they come up with these protocols for preserving the Quran? That's the traditional Muslim explanation, that God says, "We reveal this book and we will preserve it." So one of the ways it was preserved is through its recitation and through the Qira'at. Now, there are seven Qira'at that are mutawatir. And then they also have Ruat. So they'll have variations of the seven. So they taught more than one way to recite their recension. So you have the Qari and then you have the Ra'i. These, the two most important are Nafi' and Imam Asim. Imam Nafi' was in Medina. He was also, he was originally an African. He was very, very dark, Halek alon, they said. But he was born, grew up in Asfahan. And he recited the Quran for 60 years in Medina. He was the Imam. And he taught Malik the Quran, many of the great things. He took the Quran directly from the Sahabah. So he was a very important Imam in the Qira'at. And then he had two major Ruat. I mean, he had a lot of Ruat, but the Riwayah, the two Riwayah... In other words, he had a lot of people that learned it from him and actually had sent it from him. But the two that transmitted are Imam Qalun and Imam Warsh. And then Imam Warsh, that was his nickname. It was actually given by Nafi' because he was very light-skinned. One is very interesting that he was very dark, African, and Warsh was blond-haired and blue-eyed. He was a little plump and he wore a very short robe. And so he thought he looked like a certain bird, a type of bird. So Warashan is the bird. So he called him Warashan, he'd say, "Where's Warashan?" And so Imam Warsh relates that. And then Qalun. Qalun is another miracle because Qalun, which is still recited in Libya, Imam Qalun was deaf and he read lips. So it's quite amazing. And that's a historical fact. So he's one of the miracles of the Quran. And then the second, so that's Imam Nafi'. And his recitation is all over North Africa. So like in Mauritania, they do both, they learn Qalun and Warsh. In Morocco, they do Warsh. Algeria is Warsh, Tunis is Warsh. And then Libya is mixed, but mostly Qalun. And then you have the other most important of the seven is Imam Asim. And Asim also had two Ruat. But the most important one is going to be Hafz. So Hafz al-Asim is what most of you learned and that's what most Muslims know. And the difference is, like I said, the script is the same. So for instance, if you look at a Qira'a, there's a mutawatir Qira'a, meaning factual Qira'a, from the Prophet SAW that says, "Tathbattu." If you look at the original script, the dots weren't there, they were put on later. Both of those can be, the way that it's written, it just, if you change the places of the dots, "Tathbattu" or "Tabaynuh" are both there. So those, both Qira'a are from the Prophet SAW. And one of the reasons for the Qira'at is that they explain, one, they make it easier for the tribes because different tribes had different dialects. So for instance, the dialect of the Prophet SAW, which is the Qira'a of Nafi', the dialect of the Prophet SAW, they didn't have Hamza. So they didn't say "Mu'min," that was Beni Tameen did that. They said "Moomin." And that's why, you know, in Warsh you say, not "Mu'minun." So those are the type differences that are dialectical. And, but they're all agreed upon. And then in the eighth century, earlier, they considered the three that were Ahad. And these were then added to the seven, to get 10. And Imam al-Jazari was the one that kind of ended that debate about them being mutawatir. So the Muhakkikhun, after the eighth century, considered all tend to be mutawatir. But in the first period, there was a Khilaf. They're not different in that they don't change the meanings. And then you had four more that are... So you get 14 altogether. If you add the Ruat, you'll get up to over 40 different Riwayahs. But again, you have to understand, this is a miracle because, one, it's agreed upon. How do you get people to agree on something like that if it wasn't through these chains of transmission? Two, it shows you the preservation of the Quran. So it's one of the miracles of the preservation of Quran, that the Quran is a preserved book. And this idea that the Haggorites tried to argue that somehow the Quran was... There were different versions of the Quran. Muslims always acknowledge that. They never, ever shied away from that. So Ubay bin Ka'ab had a recitation, which had differences, but they were interpretations. So Ibn Mas'ud had his interpretation. Ibn Mas'ud, like in the Quran, it says, Ibn Mas'ud read that, "Kasuf al-Manfu'ish," in his Qira'a. That was a tafsir, it wasn't a... So it was Shad, right? Or some tribes, like for instance, had the sheen for a female, like that's a Shad Qira'a. So those things were out there. But what's agreed upon are these variants that still people master. But I'm going to do a little bit of that tomorrow again. So the Ahkam are the legal rulings, which we went over some of that earlier. And then the abrogation, knowing Nasik and Mansukh is very important. This is probably the most difficult area in Quranic studies, I would argue. There's a lot of debate about it. There's definitely exaggeration from the Ulama. I think you'll find, literally, some of the scholars will argue that there are, you know, a few hundred ayaahs abrogated and things like this. Imam Siyutti took it down in his famous book, Al-Itqan. He argues that there were 21 ayaahs that were abrogated. Wali Allad, Kandehlu'i, the great mushtihad from India, probably one of the last truly vast scholars that was arguably a mushtihad, actually argued there were only five that were abrogated. So there's a lot of debate about abrogation. This idea that the Ayat is safe, which is in Surah Muhammad, SAW, in the 47th Surah in the Quran. The idea that the Ayat is safe, the sign of the sword, abrogated all those Meccan Surahs is completely insane. And that unfortunately is things that people, like these extremists have used, like ISIS and things like that, they've used that, arguing that. And unfortunately, some of the Ulama did make those arguments, which is tragic. But so it is in the books, but it's not normative and it shouldn't be seen as normative. So abrogation is very important to know. People say, "Why, how could you have abrogation in Islam?" Well, first of all, the Jews and the Christians debate about this because the New Testament abrogates a lot of the Old Testament. So that's part of the point of abrogation, is it showing that things do change. The Prophet SAW had circumstances and then later the circumstances changed. In Mecca, he wasn't allowed to fight. In Medina, because he had state authority, he was allowed to fight. Right? Because they were oppressed, they were permitted to fight. And so in that verse, in Surah al-Hajj, Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala gives the community, "Idin," to defend themselves. Prior to that, they weren't because the circumstances would have led to a kind of terrorist type of thing. If in Mecca, if they were given permission to fight, how would they fight? They'd fight like subversives. So when the situations of Mecca are in existence, all those apply to Mecca. So when Muslims don't have state authority, they don't use vigilante violence. Violence has to be sanctioned by a state unless it's in self-defense, obviously. But if you just remove any of that, then it becomes tribalism and it becomes cycles of violence that never end. So that's very important, that abrogation and the concept of abrogation is actually very important. And even in the verse in the Quran, in Surah al-Baqarah, there's two verses. One is in Nahla and the other is in Baqarah that mention abrogation. The verse in Baqarah, you know, we don't abrogate an ayaah or cause it to be removed. There's two Qira'a, "Nunsihah" and "Nansaah." So it's same Rasam al-Uthmani. So "Nansaah" means delay it. So it might not be applicable in these circumstances, but in other circumstances, it becomes applicable. And this is what's called Tahqiq al-Manat in Usul. In Usul, the Manat is the cause. And so in Usul, you have the Manat, the cause of something. The Tahqiq al-Manat is determining whether the situation that you're looking at has the same applicability of the Manat in the original situation in which it... In other words, like for instance, when Umar removed the Had punishment during the famine because theft, Quran is very clear, right? The Quran is very clear about somebody who steals. But in the circumstances that Umar saw when he was caliph, this is a time of necessity. People are starving. They're going to be doing things that they would never do in normal circumstances. So his Haqiq al-Manat, he said that the legal rationale does not apply here because the theft is when things are normal and people have what they need. So if somebody's stealing out of necessity, it doesn't apply. So that's Tahqiq al-Manat. And that in essence is a type of abrogation. So what abrogation teaches us is that circumstances change and therefore rulings change. And this is why Islam is not, it's much more kazooistic than it is a kind of statute law. You cannot apply Islam like statute law. And it was only when the Europeans, trading became so important that the Ottomans attempted to create a type of statute law for the Sharia. But the Sharia is much more like, I mean, I would liken it to naturopathic medicine as opposed to allopathic. In allopathic medicine, every asthma is the same. In naturopathic medicine, they're going to look at each asthmatic case differently. Like what causes it, what's the temperament? So if you're in Chinese medicine, you might give completely different herbs for one case of asthma than you would for another. I mean, I'm just using that as an analogy, right? Whereas the kind of cookie cutter model is not possible. And then you have Hadith studies, which is very important, the Prophet SAW... And then you have hadith studies, which is very important, the Prophet SAW, especially the hadiths that relate to legal injunctions and things like this. Of which there are surprisingly not that many, even in the Quran, there are not that many that relate to. And then you have Qasas, which we went into a bit. And then finally, Tasawwuf. So he includes Tasawwuf as one of the really important signs to know, sciences to know. And he actually wrote a beautiful book on Quranic Tasawwuf. So before we have some questions, because it's going to be the 27th night, they asked me to talk a little bit here. And I thought what I'd do is just give you an example of how the Mufassiron look at Surah Al-Qadar. So in Ibn Ajiba, who, I love this tafsir, largely because it's one of the later tafsirs. So he has the ability to look back on all the previous tafsirs and benefit from them. But he was a really extraordinary scholar from Morocco. It's called Bahar al-Madeed. And so he says, Surah Al-Qadar, Bismillah, Rahman, Rahim, it's Madaniya. So again, you see, they'll go back to the earliest always initially. Wa qila makiya. And some say, qila, when you see qila, it's always for weak. It's a weaker opinion. So the first opinion will be the strong one, and then they'll say wa qila. So it means it's a weaker opinion. It said that it's a Meccan. Wa hiya khamsu ayats, and it's five ayats, munasabattuha. The actual occasion for its revelation, Anhu lama umira bis sujudi wa taqarub. So when there was a command for the sajda in the previous, right? Wasjud wa qtarib, which is not a sajda according to the Maticus. Some have it as a sajda, but it's not for us. But in the previous, in Iqra, Bismi Rabbika Ladiy Khalaq, it ends with to go into sajda and get near to Allah. And so here, then, Inna Anzalnahu Fi Laylat Al-Qadar. In other words, if you want to get near to Allah, this is the best way to get near to Allah on this night. So it immediately follows the iqtarib, you know, get close to Allah. Inna Anzalnahu Fi Laylat Al-Qadar. So I'm going to give you the chapter, the night that you can really get close to Allah. And then mention the time that ya'zmu fihi darika taqarub. So he mentions the time when that drawing near to Allah is the closest of the year. So of all the nights of the year, this one is the night for sajda and taqarub, it Allah (SWT) to get near to Allah. So he says, Yaqulul Haq Jalla wa Jalaluh. Inna Anzalnahu Fi Laylat Al-Qadri. Nuhaha bishan al-qur'an, hithu asnad inzaluh ilahi bi isnadhi ira nun al'azma. So this is called the royal we. So he's saying that when Allah says inna, not, you know, anna nassaltu, inna, it's giving it the isnad back to Allah (SWT). And then, Wa an kamaal al'inaayati bihi, and the perfection of his providence, Ja'abi zamirihidun ismih al-zahir l'al-eedan beghayti zhuhurih. And then he uses the pronoun to show you how clear it is of what he's talking about. As if it's present in everybody's mind, Inna Anzalnahu. What else? The Quran. So not even Inna Anzalna Al-Qur'an, La Anzalnahu, because it's so known in everybody's mind. And also, Ya'ud al-makruu, al-ma'mor bihi fi qawlihi ta'ala, iqra. So here, iqra, what? Ladiy Anzalnahu Fi Laylat Al-Qadri. Fattasiru Suratu bima qablaaha. Wa azma al-wakta ladiy Anzal fihi bi qawlihi, wama adrakama. Or in Wahrsh, they say adrakama with taqleel. Wama adrakama, or adrakama, if you use hafiz, tafkhim. Wama adrakama Laylat Al-Qadri. So what will convey to you, what will give you diraya? What will give you knowledge of what is the night of power? Li ma fihi min addilalati, awa dalalati, awa dhalalati, ala anna ulu wa qadrisha. Xarijun an da'ira di ra'at al-khalq. Showing you that it's impossible for creation to understand what this night is. Wama adrakama Laylat Al-Qadri. What will convey to you? You won't know, you won't understand what this night is. But to give you an approximation, Laylat Al-Qadri khairu min alfi shahar. This is a night that is better than 1,000 months. So if you look at 1,000 months, somebody did, broke it down. So for every one second of your ibadah, it's a day, 23 hours. Like, just one second. So just say, Subhanallah, you just got like, as if you did that for a whole day. So it's a good time to donate too, Insha'allah. Insha'allah, you get more reward for... And then, one minute is better than 58 days of worship. One minute, one hour, 9.8 years of worship. And then, and it actually, we don't even know, because it really says khairu min alfi shahar. It's better than. So we're just taking it as if it was 1,000 months. It's actually better than 1,000 months. And then one night is like 83 years, for if you did it like 1,000 months. So that's, Subhanallah. Allah is akram al-akrameen. Allah is a generous Lord. This came from, you know, the Prophet was talking about the previous peoples and how long they lived. And in one hadith, he mentioned about somebody from the Jews, who, for 70 years, he was in Ghazwa. Fi sabili, that's 70 years. And how, we haven't done anything, right? Because they'd only been Muslim, some of them, less than a year, or two, or three, right? Think about it. And they were thinking, oh, we haven't done anything. And so Allah revealed this, this is what I'm giving to this Ummah. It's men khasa'isi hadir Ummah. It's from the specificities of this Ummah, that I'm going to give you a night that's worth, it's as if you had a whole lifetime of worship from the previous peoples. It was amazing gift from Allah. And so then he says, you know, that, When Muradbi Inzadhi, Imma Inzaruhu Kuluhu Ilas Ma'ad Dunya, because it came down to the heaven at once, and then it came piecemeal over the 23 years. Ru'ya Anhu Anzida Jumra Waahida Fi Laylat Al-Qadri Min Loha Mahboud Ilas Ma'ad Dunya. So that's one opinion. Wa Nazat Njuma, right? La Aksumu Bim Muaqal Njum, as they come down. Over the 20-year period, Imma Ibtidaa Nuzulih, Wa Huw Al-Azhhar. Usumya Laylat Al-Qadri, Bit Qadir Al'umri Fiha, Wa Ibrazi Maqada, Terka Sana. Ni Qawlihi Ta'ala Fiha, Yufraku Kul Umr An Hakim. So in Surah Dukhan, Allah mentions that every wise affair is determined on that. So far Qadru Bima Na Taqdir. That's one opinion, that you Qadru. So it means like that he, it's the night of decrees, where everything's coming down. Another opinion is that it's sharif, like lahu Qadrun al'azim. He has a great, you know, position or place. So in other words, it's the night of immense sharif. Or, and so, I mean, Muslims, in English tradition, he says the night of power, because from Qudra. Like, but it's really sharif, you know? And then, here he says, and this is very important, Wa hiya Laylat Sabiwa Ishreen Min Ramadan, Alal Mashour. Well, the dominant opinion is it's the 27th. Why? Because Ubay ibn Ka'ab, Kana Yahlifu. He swore an oath that it was the 27th. Ubay ibn Ka'ab is one of the four people the Prophet said, take the Quran from. He was very close to the Prophet SAW, and he learned the Quran directly from the Prophet SAW. So if he asked the Prophet SAW, and he said it was the 27th night, he swore an oath. You can't swear an oath, I mean, if you're not certain about something, because you'll get in trouble with Allah. So that's where the dominant opinion comes. Ibn Abbas said, whoever gets up every night throughout the year, he's going to get Laylat Al-Qadar. So, looked at it like, no, it's, because some people say it's the 15th of Sha'ban. You'll see that in the tafsir. It's a weak opinion. But there are people that say it's actually the 15th of Sha'ban. So this is to hide, so that people, you know, Allah (SWT), people, you know, it's interesting. I saw recently this debate between an atheist and William Lane Craig. And one of the things they said is, you know, why does God hide? I don't, where is he hiding? I mean, it's pretty manifest. Wa al-ooru al'achir, wa wahiru al-ba'tin. I mean, if you can't see him, open your eyes. You know, if you can't see everything indicating, all the ancients understood that the seen world was understood because of the seen world. They all understood that, that the fact that the seen world was here meant there was something unseen. In the same way as where are your thoughts? You can't explain thoughts with some chemical explosions in your brain. Where are your thoughts? And where did language come? When I started this talk half an hour ago, I didn't know what was going to come out of me, like, where did it all, I don't know. Humans, where does it come from? Where do little children put syntax together in original ways? Where does it come from? It's coming out of some unseen realm. And so Allah is showing himself everywhere. Not in some, you know, don't mistake, people now take everything literally. Somebody said, they took an interview that I gave where I said, you know, yeah, to see God in the other. I mean, I'm not saying literally, it's seeing the creation before you, so you see the Creator in the creation. It's not, it doesn't mean that person's God or you're... I mean, it's just really strange how people twist things and just don't understand things. But you know, there's just some people, the haters are going to hate, and this is something we have to deal with. You know, people, if they like you, they'll make excuses. And if they don't like you, even if you can walk on water, they'll say, I got his soul's wet. And it's just amazing. You're supposed to 70, yeah, 70. I had somebody coming to me once, I'm at 68 with you. Thanks for giving me 68, you know? So, anyway, so then, he says here, you know, that, Wataqsiis Al-Alf Bil Thikri Imma Litakthir, Ou Limma Ru'ya Anhu Anhu Thakra Raja Min Bani Israil. Labisa Silaaf Fi Sabilillah Al-Fa Shahara. So that's in the hadith. Fa Ajib Al-Mu'minun, Wataqasara Ilai Ma'amarhum. Fa Uthu Laylat Al-Qadri, Hiya Khairu Min Amri Darik Al-Gazi. So that's, Imam Al-Qurthbi mentioned that in his tafsir. So then, Tanazaru Al-Malaitka Wa Ruhu Fiha. Wa Ruhu Imma Gibriel, Aw Kalkal Min Al-Malaitka, La Terahum. So it's either Gibriel, or this vast creation of angels that are seen on that day, or it's the Rahmah. When Muradbi Tanazuli him, these are all, you know, possibilities. So the dominant opinion is Gibriel, al-ayyishah. Wa Qila Ilas Ma'ad Dunya, Bi Adni Rabbihim. Tanazaru, Ya Ta'luqal Tenzal. So by the permission of their Lord, they're coming down. Min Kul Umr, Tanazaru, Min Kul Umr. Ay, Min Ajii Kul Umr Qadaahu Allah Ta'ala, Li Terka Sana Ti Ira Qabir. So it's going to the next year. Ru'ya Anhu Allah Ta'ala, Yu'lam Al-Malaitka, Bi Kul Ma Yekonu Fi Darik Al'Am Kulhi. Wa Qila, Yabruz Darika Min Ilma Al-Gaybi, Laylat Nuss Min Sha'ban. So that, again, weak opinion. So he goes on. Salaamun, Hiya Hatta. Ay, Ma Hiya Illa Salaamun Al-Mu'minin. J'ala Ha Nafa Salam, Likar Isli Ma Yuslimun Al-Anas. Because the angels are giving so much greeting to the people, so there's all this peace coming in. Wa Qadruya Anhu Yuslimun Al-Kul Qaiman, Wa Qaidan, Wa Qariyan. So they're giving peace to anybody who's standing, or sitting in thikr, or reciting the Quran. Wa Musallin. Wa Ma Hi Illa Salaamah, Ay La Yu'Qadru Allah Ta'ala Fiha Illa Salaamah Wa Chaira. Wa Ama Fi Ghaidha, Fi Qdi Salamah Wa Blaaan. So that night, it's all salaam, and in other times, it's tribulation also with it. Wa Qari Ibn Abbas, Hiya Ishara Ilan Ha Laylat Sabiwa Ishreen. So Ibn Abbas said, the word hiya is an indication that it's on the 27th night. Because if you count the letters, the, sorry, not the letters, if you count the words, when you get to hiya, the hiya is the 27th word in the surah. So Ibn Abbas said, that's an ishaara, that it means it's the 27th night. Even though the Prophet SAW said, seek it out, At Tamsuhu Ya Ashar Al-Awakhir. Right? Look forward in those last 10 nights, and in the odd nights of those last 10 nights. So that's all true. Now, here's what's, this is very, this is ishaara. So, you know, understand, this is ishaara, but he's... So ishaara, Ahal Al-Qulub Min Al-Aarifin. Al-Awkaat Kul Ha Indhum Laylat Al-Qadri. For the people that are real knowers of God, every day is Laylat Al-Qadri. Wal Amaak Indhum Kul Ha Arafat. And everywhere they are is Arafat. Wal Ayaam Kul Ha Jumu'at. And every day is Jumu'at. Lainna Maksud Min Ta'ziim Al-Zaman Wal Mekan. Because these times are times, the reason you get up is to give them, to magnify them. Wa Man Yu'Alzmu Sha'air Allah, Fa Innah Mintaqal Qulub. So from the piety in your heart, you want to magnify the things of Allah (SWT). So he's saying, these are people who do this all the time. They magnify every hour, they magnify every place they're in, they magnify every... And then, Wal Awkaatun Anar Arifin Kul Ha Sawa Fi Hadal Ma'ana. And that's why Abu Abbas said, Nahnu Wa Al-Hamdu Lillah Awkaatuna Kul Ha Laylat Al-Qadri. So that's probably Abu Abbas Al-Mursi. It might be Abu Abbas Al-Hadrami, but I think it's Abu Abbas Al-Mursi. Al-Hamdu Lillah Awkaatuna Kul Ha Laylat Al-Qadri. Lainna Ibadatuhum Kul Ha Qalbiya. Bina Thikre, Thikre Wa Atibar, Wa Shuhudan, Astibsar. Wa Fikratu Sa'atan Aftaru Min Ibadati Sabine Sana. To a deep reflection, for just a moment's deep reflection, is better than 70 years of worship. It's a weak tradition. But the point he's making is that there are people that really are with Allah all the time. But this is a time for those of us, for those lesser mortals like ourselves, to really benefit from this time. So it's an important night, and the last 10 nights are all good. But the 27th has that special maqam, and traditionally, the Muslims have seen it as being that night. So may Allah (SWT), Insha'allah, give us the blessing of this night and increase us and give us the ability to get close to Allah (SWT), Insha'allah. We're almost there. Are there any questions? Few questions?
Yes, there are several questions. Thank you so much. May Allah reward you. Let's see. Well, one of the, one of the most repeated questions is considering the various geographical locations, and that it is night in one place while it is day in another. How do we understand when Laylat Al-Qadar truly falls?
That's a great question, because I've thought about that. So, first of all, it's very important to remember that everybody has a deen with Allah (SWT). Like, your deen is between you and Allah (SWT). And innama la'maru bin niyat, actions are by intentions. And Allah (SWT) is not limited by time or space. He's the creator of time and space. So he's not within time and space. Time and space is contained in his knowledge. So whatever it is, like, we know now that it's one day in one place, and it's another day in another place. So we have two places on the earth where they're literally in two separate days. With Allah, that's like meaningless in the idea that they're too separate. But everything is one with Allah. His knowledge is absolute. And so whatever Laylat Al-Qadar is, he's telling us what it is, and he knows it. And he's telling that it's on, our Prophet told us that it's on one of these last 10 nights, especially the odd nights. And Sahabah like Ubay ibn Ka'ab said, it's on the 27, which is historically where Muslims have considered it. That's mashour. In other words, the dominant opinion of our tradition. And so, Insha'allah, Allah will give you by your niyya. And so, Insha Allah, Allah will give you by your Niyah. My own experience personally is, I mean, in fasting now for 40, going on 43 years. I've, I think a lot of Muslims have had the experience of feeling the peace of Leila al Qadar. And I remember once when I, when I had a lot of Hima when I was very young. I used, I went out on the 27th morning, because the Hadith I read said that the sun rises without any rays. And I really felt that it was the 27th night. And so I went out that morning, I was in Al Ain. And I went out and the sun just came up red without any rays at all. It was just amazing. And I was, I just felt like that was for me, like it, and I, and I really believe that about God, that God gives each one of us what we need. Like you will, you know, you can be, you can be like, you know, you can lose a loved one and then it starts raining. And you feel like, you know, God's, the sky's, you know, sending down rain for you. And that, and Allah is generous like that. So, you know, Allah is real. You know, the Prophet said, Allah is real. And so people that don't know that, and I feel sorry for them. Because if you're open to God, if you're open to guidance, he, God will show you. God will show you. And I've seen enough in my life to know that that's absolutely true. Where you stop doubting because you've seen too many things. And people say, well, I haven't seen those things, because you're not open to them. If you open yourself up to them, Allah is generous. And Allah will show you, Allah will give you just what you need when you need it. Even a word that you might need to hear. But if you're closed, if your heart's closed. When hearts close, that's how all empires fall. Your heart has to be open. Next one?
I think the next dominant question is, what are the most rewarding things to do during Leila al Qadar?
The Prophet SAW gave us the Dua. So you forgive, you pardon, you overlook. And you're generous, it's one of the attributes of Allah, you're kariim. So overlook us. I mean, we're creatures, we're fallen creatures. Our shortcomings are many and we have a generous Lord. You know, Allah says in the Quran, like, what has, you know, what has deluded you concerning your generous Lord? Some of the Mufassirun said He put his answer in the question, your Karim, your generosity. Because Allah, people sin and he doesn't destroy them. And people say, why do the oppressors do all these things? What, like, why do they do all these things and nothing happens to them? Why does somebody who does all this evil, he lives and has all this energy? I mean, apparently some people don't sleep except for a few hours a nights, you know? And they can do all their Fasad and corruption, they have all that energy and then they never get sick. And then a good person, a really gentle soul, who's serving humanity, who's doing all these things. And then Allah gives him, like they get cancer or they get some disease. And then people say, what's going on here? If Allah loves people, he gives them trials. The fact you're not getting any trials is a really bad sign. It's a bad sign. And the fact that you see so many people that are evil, that don't seem to have these trials, is a clear sign of the truth of this thing. And then the other thing is, what Allah is showing us is if he allows respite for these people, then who are we? Like, who are we? Isn't that teaching us that we should be, have more Hilm? I mean, look how generous the Prophet SAW was. Because if we got angry, if, you know, people say, why doesn't he stop the, you know, the person when he's about to do his evil? God could have stopped the Twin Towers from, why didn't he stop those pilots? Why wasn't there a policeman that stopped them? If Allah stopped everything and didn't let us have, exercise our free will, then what's the meaning of free will? And the second thing is, the fact that Allah doesn't react to us, because he's not, he doesn't have emotion, he doesn't react. Is teaching us to To be more like God, to be less reactive, to be more forbearing, to be more cautious, to be more calm, to be more understanding. I mean, we want God to forgive us and give us excuses, but we don't want him to forgive anybody else. I mean, that's not fair. Right? Yeah, everybody, you know, I always tell people Nobody from this Ummah is saying, oh, God be just with me. There's nobody saying that. And if they are, they're crazy. But they want justice for everybody else. And you don't believe until you want for other people what you want for yourself according to the Hadith. Everybody wants justice for everybody else, but not for themselves. I want mercy, but not for them, not for him, he doesn't deserve it. This is a human condition. I mean, there's an element to us that's very ridiculous as a species, except for the prophets and the Any last one or one more?
Well, this was a pretty heavy one that was asked a couple of times. It sounds like it's from a convert who is asking how to not feel overwhelmed with the verses concerning, you know, hell. When you have family members, you know, who don't believe like you believe, like in Islam, and how not to feel overwhelmed by that as a Muslim.
I mean, first of all, I would just say this, one, we don't know where people are going. And it's very important never to make an assumption that people, we don't know. You can't, it's haram to say anybody's going to hell. I mean, we, you know, we can think that probably, that person probably is, like I would think, given what they're doing. Like some really evil people, but unless the Quran actually specifies a person, we can't say. Kufr is a very complicated thing. I actually wrote an article called, Who are the Disbelievers that's online? Kufr is, I think Muslims have a very simplistic view of it. I think it's much more complicated than people realize. Kufr, first of all, is, it's clearly a denial and a rejection of the truth, once you see that it's true. And so a lot of people are just Nas, they're just people. And the Quran has Nas. There's different people that Allah speaks to, but the first people he speaks to, the very first command in the Quran. That's the very first verse in Surah Al Baqarah that gives a command. Once the Hudja has been established on them, then they become Kaffir if they reject it. For most people, Abu Hamad Ghazali, who I think is right on this issue, and I mean, I'm nobody to say Abu Hamad is right, but A lot of Ulama do not hold this opinion, but Abu, Imam Abu Hamad Ghazali is of the opinion That the vast majority of people are not Kaffirun. Because they haven't, they have the Hukum of Kufr. But he says, if they get the message in a distorted way and they reject it, they're rejecting a distortion. They're not rejecting the message. If they get, or if they never got the message in the first place. So a lot of people don't, they just don't know. And I think Muslims, we need to be more humble and get out of this kind of idea of, you know, that paradise is a You know, it's a hotel that we've booked. And everybody who shows up on Yom Akbar, you know, sorry, it's already, the Muslims have booked this. So I, I mean, I think we have to be very careful about that. And that's not to belittle, you know, Kufr is real and there are Kaffirun and I'm not denying that in any way, shape or form. But I'm saying, just be careful about judging people, because we just don't know. We don't know what they've been through, we don't know what they've walked. You see people, you know, that, that, that are behaving certain ways and you don't know, you just don't know. I mean, I was, I was at a family gathering once and I was gonna get a chair and this man rushed up to me and started screaming at me. That's my chair, don't touch it. And I walked away and I was like, you know, and then somebody explained to me that, you know, he's mentally, you know, he's mentally ill. Right? Well, that, that elicits compassion, but the default setting is always to judge. You know, and that's why it's just really important to just have compassion with people, to try to understand where people are coming from. And that's not to say that there aren't, you know, that we do have rules and that if people break the rules and, you know, things like that. Because we do have moral agency. But sometimes it really is mental illness and things like that. But those who have moral agency that do evil, no, we, those people, they will have retribution. You know, Allah will, will give everybody their due that deserves it. And those that were merciful in this world, Allah will show mercy to them in the next world. It's the first Hadith I learned, all the Musnidoon, the very first Hadith they teach you, it's called The first Hadith that you learn is That those who show mercy, the merciful will show mercy to them. Those who show mercy Those who show mercy So have mercy, man there is called Show mercy to people in the world. The quality of mercy is not strained, it droppeth as a gentle rain from heaven. Upon the place beneath it is twice blessed, it blesseth him that gives and him that takes. I mean, it's mercy is, is, that's why our Prophet is We only sent you as a mercy to all the world, that's who our Prophet is. So I'm not denying there's wrongs and people that we believe in justice and that's absolutely true and we shouldn't forego justice. And you end up in this kind of wishy-washy world where there's no, no, I'm not saying that at all, it's very important. Governments have to be just, governments are not there to be merciful. You don't want to judge who, when you, when somebody stole all your money and you take him to court and the judge says, you know, we should have mercy on him. You know, that's not the role of the judge. The role of the judge is to restore, right? To give restitution to the wrong. So the governments have to be just, but people, to the best of our ability, should be merciful and forgive and overlook as best we can. Because if you forgive people, then Allah will, it's much easier to be forgiven. And that's the famous Hadith of the man, he had no good deeds. He had no good deeds, except when he sent his debt collector out to collect debts. He said, look, if he's having a hard time, don't, just leave him alone. And Allah said, I'm more merciful than that one. So he forgave him, because he forgave other people's debts. That was the only good deed he had. Or the, or the, or the, you know, the woman who fed the prostitute. In the Hadith, it's Mu'mis, she's literally a prostitute. And she sees the dog panting and she takes from her shoe from the well and gives the dog water. And Allah forgave her for that act of kindness to a dog. So what about to human beings? So that's a point. So I'm not, people don't get me wrong about that. I don't, I don't want people to think that I'm in any way condoning or saying that we should all just let people run all over us and forgive. No, if people do something criminal or if people aggress upon you, right? But the highest people are people that do forgive and overlook and it's a high Maqam. But it's certainly not, you know, it's not something that you have to do. You have every right to get your, your justice about things in the world. And if that's how you feel, then you certainly deserve that. But also an important thing is to remember, it's, I always say it's all the way down. You know, Muslims, they, they look at Is the government, right? And one of the things in our He says We don't, we don't imprecate against our leaders, even if they're oppressive to us. That's in our So, so is from the But is everybody, so when the Quran is mentioning Doesn't just mean the governments, it means everybody. You know, everybody has And you have to be careful, because you know, there's in the house, there's towards your wife or towards your husband or towards your children. There's towards your neighbors, there's, I mean, is everywhere. And then, you know, You know, like There's gonna be no fear of, like And is like, it's, 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 it's partial It's not full It's like, there's no, and then there's no even partial, like even, so it's not stinting on your right. So could be partial or full, like you lose some of your right. Whereas with Allah, nothing, everybody is going to be either forgiven or given exactly what they Allah will not oppress anybody. I mean, it's impossible for him to oppress anyway, if you understand That we're all We're just two servants. I would just like to say, we're in the last few days of Ramadan and there's a lot of need out there. There's, there's, there's an organization called KashmirAware.org, I think, that is important for the Kashmiri people. I don't know the organization, but somebody I really trust told me it's a very, because he knows them and works with them. So the Kashmiris are going through a lot of hardship right now, among many other. I mean, there's so many organizations, but also remember that it's very important not to To neglect our institutions in the United States, because our community is only as strong as our institutions that are, are representing our community. This is one of them, Zaituna College as an academic institution, there are others. There's the Chicago, they call it the American Islamic College, that's the only other college that we have. And then I think there's Bayan, Claremont also, Jihad Turks, the president there. There are only a few, we've only got a few colleges and we need to establish these colleges and we need more, to be honest with you. But I think it's important to establish the ones that we have, the few, because we only got a handful there. I think there's only a handful. I mean, there are some madrasas that are more traditional colleges, like Qasim, I think in, in Where, where did you go? In Houston, which is Dallas, yeah, so a very good institution. I mean, there's good, yeah, there's good institutions. So we have to support the ones we have to get them solid and strong and, and hopefully, I mean, we were fortunately the first to be accredited. Which is important, because it enables our students to go on to other colleges easily. And Alhamdulillah, we've gotten students into top medical schools, we've gotten students into places like Georgetown, University of Chicago, Claremont Colleges and several others. So Urbana-Champaign, we had one of our, we're very proud of her, from the Rahad family. Is one of really great families that have supported Zaituna since early on. So, you know, that is, that's, that's a really, quite an accomplishment. She's working now in the DOJ. So it's really important that we support these. So I hope you find yourself to support Zaytuna. We've been very fortunate to have your support. I know there are many other worthy institutions, but... And I would encourage supporting them also. I'm of the school of abundance, not the school of scarcity. "Lillahi Khazainu Samawatui Ard." Allah has the storehouses of the heavens and the earth. But I do hope that you will find it in yourselves to support what we're doing here. We want to renovate the campus. We want to have... We're gonna, Insha Allah, we just got a recent, really very generous... Some help to start online courses. So we're gonna be doing that, Insha Allah, to have some really good online courses for the classes that are taught here. Insha Allah, Binnilah. So... And then the curriculum series. Finally, we have the Faris Khan's book, "Literally Is All Done." So it's gonna go to the printer at the end of the month. That's gonna be a landmark work in Aqeedah, in the English language. Critical Edition in the Arabic. Beautiful commentary, really solid arguments for why we believe in God. We're a rational faith. We don't believe because it's absurd. We believe because it's actually more reasonable than to not believe, right? In God, you know? People can find other things that they find fault in. I mean, Islam, to me, of all the world religions, and I think this is... Somebody like beautiful scholar in France. I mean, somebody I have immense admiration for is Dr. Bruno Gurdadoni, who came to the RS this year. Truly one of the brilliant intellects alive on the earth. And he found a home in Islam because he just felt that it was... He was a man of faith, and he felt that it was the one religion that, as a world-class cosmologist, because he's one of the leading experts on galaxy formation. He's an astrophysicist. And he said that he just felt that the Quran was a book that didn't... He actually said, "I felt it was written by the cosmologist." So he said, "It wasn't a book that offended his sensibilities as a scientist," which is quite a testimony from somebody of that caliber. So I think you should all be happy that we're Muslims. Be happy, unhappy. Alhamdulillah. We'll be out of here soon enough. Not here. I'm talking about this Dunya into a much more vast realm. It's gonna be a very interesting journey. So I want to mention also Idris Bayan. We lost a dear brother to the COVID. Yeah, really. Somebody who used to come to my classes. He was just really beautiful man. Maybe you could put a picture up of him, just... Yeah, make Dua for him. Insha Allah, may Allah give him Jannah al-Firdaus. Firdaus al'ala, you know? And may Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, make him a Shaheed. Because the death of a Mutaun is Shaheed. May Allah make him a Shaheed. Anyway, beautiful man. I really... And also Imam Bilal's father. Make Dua for him. Huh? For Shifa, yeah. Yeah, beautiful. Another really beautiful man. Yeah, Imam Ansari. You know, just one of those solid Allah. You know, just one of those people that just, you know... Lover of knowledge and... And anybody else who's sick, all the sick people, may Allah give them ease and repose and solace. And may Allah make it easy on our Palestinian brothers and sisters and Syrian refugees, all those people in camps now. May Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, make it easy for them. May Allah give them the solace of the Book of Allah despite all of their hardships and tribulations. May Allah make it easy for the people of Yemen and all the things that they've been suffering. All those children. Libya, you know, all these places, Kashmir. May Allah protect the minorities in India, all of them, the Muslims, the Christians, the Janes, the Jews, the... All the minorities there. And may Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, move this cyclone in the Bay of Bengal away from harm so that these people don't have that suffering. May Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, make it easy for them. And may Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, Insha Allah, remove this blight that's upon us, on this, on our species, you know, right now. And make us all wake up to the reality of our sinfulness and the need for forgiveness and the need for Taubah. Ameen, Insha Allah. Subhanallah, Rabbika Rabbal Azza, Taha, Wa Ta'ala.